...connection for folks coming east to west, west to east and south to north also in getting into the park. It's a great, great, great addition.
Councilman McGuire, you have a second?
Yes, in addition to what Councilman Vice Mayor Lamar said, and I can certainly agree with that, these trails are a tremendous asset to the town, not only for our use, but to help to define what Cave Creek is. We did Spur Cross in 2000. We're doing these trails. These will be very important to us in the future.
Anything else from council?
I have one thing. I just want to commend you on your choice, even if they were a higher bid, because looking at the documentation that is supporting this company is pretty amazing. The things they have done, the photos are worth a thousand words. They absolutely understand our desert environment. So, thank you for choosing them.
And actually, they are here tonight to represent any questions of the mayor.
Oh, it's fabulous, just fabulous. You have a real eye for the desert. Thank you.
Good to see you back.
Okay, the role, please, Carrie. This is financial.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, unanimous vote, seven to zero. It clearly passed. So, thank you, council. Thank you, Bambi. Agenda two, council discussion and approval to direct the utilities manager to purchase PMM Seal Coat material for the annual coating of roadways in the town of Cave Creek as part of the town's pavement management program. David?
Mayor, council members, what you have in front of you tonight is our annual purchase of Seal Coat materials. Every year, we perform-
Okay, David, can you bring the mic right to you?
Okay. Must have some problem here today.
Let's try the other microphone.
Does that one work better?
It seems so. I got right on it there.
Is that better for you guys? Okay, that works. There we go. Repeating where I was, what you have in front of you tonight is our annual Seal Coating Purchase. Every year, we Seal Coat roads in town. This year, we're looking a little over 900,000 square feet, which is about fifteen and a half lane miles of Seal Coat. This work's performed by our public work staff, and we've recently had a piece of equipment repaired in order to make it easier. We expect to start mid-September and be done around mid-October. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council?
Well, I-
Councilman McClancy?
I guess I have a lot of questions. It seems like it's, um, it's a... Having read your pavement book that I recently received, from front to cover, and seen what was done last year and what's projected, and then the quality of the roads going from green, dark green, to the reds, to the yellows, how does this play into that? What type of roads are you doing? Not green roads, if they're in great condition?
This is part of the second year of-
Sixteen, sixteen, or twenty sixteen?
Yeah, this is 2016.
Right.
In order to bring certain pavements back up into manageable condition. This is stopgap repairs, basically. Because of years of neglect, we have to go back and we have to do stopgap repairs.
Will you be giving us something that shows us those particular fifteen and a half lanes or miles of road that you're going to do?
I can-
Just simply because I get calls, and there are people live in different areas of the town, and their roads, as I look through the book you gave out-
Right.
Shows that their lanes are in bad condition.
Okay.
And how does that, how does that work for them? I mean, having read it, there's all kinds of ways to approach them.
Right, we have different levels of condition, okay? We have roads that are in significantly deteriorated condition, that have potholes and edge damage because Maricopa edges were never constructed, or ribbon curbs were never constructed along the edge of the pavement. We have surface coats like this that we're talking about here, which are meant to extend the life of the asphalt pavement. As asphalt ages in the sun, the bituminous materials that are in there volatilize off, and if we don't put some of those bituminous materials back into that substrate, the roads ultimately turn back to gravel. So, the admixture that holds it all together vaporizes off. So, that's what Seal Coating does. It helps prevent that. I can give you guys a list tonight. I brought these along. There's one section in here I've taken out because it's down in Carefree Highway. I don't want our guys actually outdoing the work in Carefree Highway. I believe it's a little too dangerous. That work will defer. We'll give that out to a contractor where we can have an entire traffic control plan prepared, and we can do a time shutdown where maybe we do the work at night instead of trying to do it during the crazy part of the day. But I'll hand out copies now, and you guys can see what this work entails. Other projects, or major projects that we'd have, would be things like mill and pave. The whole section along Cave Creek Road here on the northbound lanes is planned to be mill and paved. That's where the pavement has deteriorated bad enough that we have to literally take off an inch and a half or two inches and put a new pavement surface back down like we did in front of Walmart last summer.
And that brings another question. The question would be, do you have a timeline for those different types of activities so people in the community who live in sections of town could go online? And I can say, you can go online and you can see approximately when the town will be getting to your road with its special needs?
I have not posted that yet.
Okay.
The Seal Coat work, like we talked about, is mid-September to mid-October. The major roadway projects, which is next year's, or this year's chip seal, and the reconditioning of Cave Creek Road, we're deferring that now to spring. We're thinking probably late March, April, May timeframe, we'll be doing the rest of the major work. And I can put something online if it benefits the public. Okay, so at the bottom here, you'll see there's a little over a million square feet identified. But if you go up about eight from the bottom, you'll see Carefree Highway in there. That one's been taken out now. So, we're talking about roughly 900,000 square feet, and that equals fifteen and a half lane miles. So, this is the Seal Coat work for September, October timeframe.
Anything else, David?
That's it.
There's public comment on agenda item number two. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. Councilman, yes, sir.
Move to approve the purchase of PMM Seal Coat material from Seal Master, the town supplier under state contract for the annual Seal Coating of roadways in the town of Cave Creek as part of the town's pavement program, not to exceed $38,000.
Second. Motion made in second. Councilman Esser?
Well, David, obviously, from the questions that Councilman Clancy asked, it's on everybody's mind. So, this handout will help. And, um, do you have a different, this will be on the webpage also?
I can put that on the webpage. Actually, the pavement management program in its entirety, the whole PDF document is on our website right now.
Another question, just a question. I support what you're doing, and it's a good thing. Some of these are difficult to identify.
Yeah, this was the secret code that they used to identify roads. Unfortunately, software has certain limitations on the number of characters you can use for a descriptor. And so, they abbreviated these. But if you see an N, or an S, or E, or W first, that's a north, south, east, or west road, and then you can decipher the abbreviations. But I'd be more than happy to sit and have lunch with you sometime and explain all these in detail.
Secret code, right. All right, thank you very much.
Councilman Bunch, you have a second?
We don't maintain it, we lose it.
Anything else from council? Carrie, the role, please.
Yes?
Councilman Bunch, Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
Yes, by a voter seven to zero, the motion carries. Thank you, council.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Princehorn. Agenda item number three, council discussion to open the right-of-way on Glory Road from 38th Street to 36th Street in the town of Cave Creek. This is on the agenda because that, uh, this and the matter that is to follow, so that all of council is getting updated about this situation, um, so that we're all aware of it. We're not taking any action. This is just for discussion. From staff who is handling- I'll have the town engineer sit down.
Mayor and council, this is a request from a resident citizen in town to have you look at having that road. Not necessarily developed, but brought to a state would be useful. There are some encroachments within this right-of-way, or paper road, as I call them. It's probably better explained by the town engineer, and the resident can explain what she would like to see done.
Okay, Mr. Princehorn, do you want to give us the overview?
Mayor and council, this is a section of Glory Road west of 38th Street, and, um, we've been approached several times over the last year to improve this section of road. We have a homeowner right at the intersection who has a driveway that encroaches slightly into our property. He has some other barriers that are back there. I've sent him a letter asking him to remove his items. He's failed to do so so far. The barrier items are probably relatively easy to remove, but he's actually got a paver-type driveway that's been installed, so a little bit of that encroaches on us. The bigger issue for us is that we've got two confluent washes that come together at this location, creating about a ten-foot deep channel, and his driveway dips down through the channel. To make improvements, I feel we'd have to expend a fair amount of money somewhere in excess of about $100,000 to make this project work in order to have a level-grade road that would tie into the next road over.
Okay, he's, so that everybody understands the same thing clearly. A property owner has built something in the town's right-of-way, right? He's encroaching slightly into our right-of-way, probably somewhere in the order of three to four feet. Three or four feet? Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Is this on the list to be developed?
No, sir.
So, we're talking about $100,000 just to make it safe for-
$108,000 is my next-
-not being completed in the system as a public right-of-way, as a public road?
Correct. It might be better to have the resident give explanation of what she wanted to see done. It might be, at this time, Dr. Drew Meyer, it might be best to have her give her explanation of what she's looking for, then David Princehorn, the town engineer, can comment on it.
Okay.
How long has this been in the right-of-way?
I'm unsure. It may have actually been constructed slightly before, around the time that I started, about a year and a half ago. And I don't really have an exact date on that for you.
Okay. Any other questions of council for staff?
Okay.
Thank you, David. Okay, Ms. Grillo?
Mayor Francia, Vice Mayor Lamar, and members of the town council. My name is Diana Grillo. My husband Eric Carlson and I live at 3695 East Glory Road. I'm here to request that you take action to open Cave Creek's Glory Road right-of-way between 36th and 38th Street. Approximately fifteen years ago, when we built our home on land adjacent to the right-of-way, later named Glory Road, it was open for driving, hiking, biking, horseback riding from either 36th or 38th Street. When the Kegger Trust home was built on the southeast corner of 36th and Glory Road, the owners blocked access with a private drive on the right-of-way. Since then, they have continued to add impediments to further block access. Repeated requests to remove the encroaching drive and impediments have been ignored. Over the past approximately four years, I have made repeated requests of Cave Creek to open their right-of-way. Only two things have happened. One, approximately one year ago, the right-of-way was surveyed, staked, and marked. I was told this was a prelude to opening access. Two, on October 14th of 2014, a letter was sent to the Kegger Trust advising them that they had encroached on the right-of-way, and they needed to remove any improvements so that the roadway could be graded within the next sixty days. The town's failure to follow through on that letter has only emboldened the owners, and they have placed more impediments in the right-of-way in defiance of the town's request. In addition to the town's own self-interest in protecting and maintaining its street's right-of-way, in February of this year, mayor and council passed and adopted Ordinance 2015-01, which prohibits rights of ways being blocked from use for horseback riding, jogging, hiking, bicycling, and to travel. Allowing this situation to continue does not seem consistent with the town's philosophy of maintaining open access. Finally, I want to be clear that I am not requesting that Cave Creek pave or even regularly maintain the road, only that you promptly open the right-of-way as legally required so all residents of the area can return to using it as intended. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer them.
For council, Councilman Lipsky?
Pardon me, I've got a question for town staff. That all sounds very reasonable. Why did that all happen or not happen? I mean, why, why was the, why was the letter sent and then action not taken?
We first identified the right-of-way issue.
I don't think that one worked.
Upon further investigation, we identified there were, I think, six or seven saguaros that need to be moved, and five mesquite trees. A little further investigation revealed that there's a pretty large wash right there. And when we started putting a pencil to it, it just became unfeasible to perform that work at this time.
Ms. Grillo?
They've been using that as a driveway to drive in and out, so I don't understand why it's feasible for them to use that and to drive in and out, and why other people can't drive in and out. It was before they built that home, people drove in and out of it all the time. People delivering packages, people, real estate people, we did it. They blocked, they've blocked that road, basically. That's what they've done. And I'm not asking for them to, I understand that you got this estimate, but I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for them to open it up. Horses would go by there. We would watch the horses go through. Now, they can't do it. You can't hike past there. You can't ride a horse back there. You can't drive past there. They have literally blocked the access to the other road.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yeah, I want to make sure-
Illegally.
I want to make sure that I understand the situation first. There's nothing, washes and blocking access, or sorrows that are just there. So, whatever use was made of the right-of-way could be made without doing the expensive work that David is... You're not asking him to do $100,000 of work-
Absolutely not.
Of washes or right-of-ways or any of that?
Absolutely not.
All right, so what we have is a little bit of pavers of a driveway and some barriers? Do we hear something about barriers?
No, they, well, they have, they had concrete barriers up. They have, um, they, right now, I actually sent, I actually gave you a picture of some of the things that they put in the way. They keep putting different things in the way, so-
Have those been removed?
One's a truck, one's a, uh, a flatbed kind of thing. They just keep adding different things.
Okay, so the only permanent thing in the right-of-way right now are some pavers?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire, question?
Has the owner done anything other than putting in his driveway or putting objects in there to prevent access to that right-of-way?
With the trucks there, you can't, you have no access. It's blocking it.
So, in addition to the pavers, he's parking vehicles there from time to time?
Yes, always. Just the vehicles change, but it's always blocked.
There's always a vehicle, just a different vehicle.
Yes, or several vehicles.
Okay, all right. The access that they're wishing to use is actually in the legal right-of-way, is that correct?
You're talking about the access that Ms. Grillo would like to see opened up?
Right, it actually falls within the legal right-of-way description. It's not going somewhere across somebody's corner, somebody's property.
Yes, let me try to explain what historically was there based on historic photographs that I went back and looked on Google Earth. It looks like at one time that there was a, basically, a dirt roadway through there that you could pass through, that actually went off of our right-of-way area. It went over onto this gentleman's property at some point in time. And you certainly could ride a horse down through a wash up and down. There's no doubt about that. You could take a quad through there, and you might be able to take any kind of a four-wheel drive through there. I don't think you'd want to take your Mercedes across this thing if it dips down ten feet. But, um, the area that she's speaking of to stay inside our right-of-way would be a meandering pathway that would have to go between the mesquites and the saguaros. And we could certainly put back a horse path or some kind of a trail through there without much difficulty at all.
Okay, but there's two issues. One is removing the things owned by a private person from the right-of-way. That done, then it is an improved right-of-way, correct?
Correct.
And people could walk on it if they want to. It's just a matter of riding on, walking through on their own. Okay, so-
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's one issue, is getting rid of the stuff that a person has put there to block the right-of-way that is, sounds to me, is not permanent. That has nothing to do with spending money. I mean, we can make him take all of his stuff, and then it's open. If I've got, if I, because the resident's not asking us to spend money. She's just saying, get his junk out of the way.
Absolutely. That's what I've been asking all along. Just, just get it out of the way so that we can use that.
You don't need to go back to spending money. We're-
Right.
We're not asking for spending money.
Thank you.
Councilman Esser, question?
David, ma'am, is it your understanding that all or any part of Glory Road is in the town's system? What was there before?
All of it is dedicated town right-of-way. We do have right-of-way in that area.
So, David, why can't we get the property owner to move the obstruction?
I will speak with Marshall Stein, and we will crack the whip. That's, he's my enforcement. I'm not the enforcement.
My understanding is she is not asking for a $108,000 improvement.
Okay.
She's simply asking for it to be back the way it was, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Absolutely, you're absolutely correct. That's, that's the way-
That's the way it was when we moved in. Our road has always been a dirt road. We're not asking for anybody to do anything to the road. We're fine with the dirt road.
We just want access.
Yes, we want access. We had access, and when they came in, they took it over. They took over, basically, took over the road. And, um, and, and a large portion of their driveway is in the road, not just a small portion. I have to just correct that.
I have one last question. Is the picture you have given us with the pickup truck looking east or west?
Is it looking east or, oh, west, I guess?
In North Town?
Oh, oh, yes. I'm sorry. It's looking to the west, yes. I took it from-
Looking west?
Yes.
I was trying to pick it up.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we request an update on this from Marshall Stein at the next council meeting?
Yes, town manager, or Councilman Lipsky would like an update on this matter for council. Do you mean the one on the 12th, or the-
Whichever the next one is.
August the 12th? Is the special meeting one?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless you need more time.
Thank you.
Okay, here's public comment on agenda item number three. Okay, council is taking no action. It's given a directive, so we'll wait and see.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Agenda item number four. Agenda item number four, council discussion regarding neighborhood concerns for a proposed addition to a burn located on the property at 41355 North Fleming Springs Road in the town of Cave Creek. Same reason that I asked for this to be put on the agenda so that all of council hears of this matter. Who's, who's going to update or give an overview from staff, town manager?
This was not really a staff issue. It's more of a resident, citizen issue. So, the best way to proceed, I believe, is to have the residents raise their concerns to the council, so the council can hear their concerns, then you'll give me direction on how you wanted to handle that.
Okay, good enough. Let's go right to public comment.
Sandy Apple?
Mayor Francia, can you hear me okay? Mayor Francia and Vice Mayor Lamar, my name is Sandy Apple. I live in 41049 North Echo Canyon Road. My property looks directly into the top picture right there. Every single day that I'm coming or going from this property. Let me, let me start by saying the burn permit request at this property is really the least of the worries here. These are not your Ossing Harriet neighbors. In fact, I was in the right place at the right time last Saturday night at 6:00 PM, and an eighteen-wheeler rolls up to this residence with a trailer carrying a John Deere earth mover with caterpillar tracks. And I was lucky enough to hear the conversation between Christian Schultz, who's the oldest brother, and that driver. And this is verbatim. I'm going to share that piece of that conversation with you that I heard. The driver says, "What's going on here?" Because obviously, he can see all this. And he says, "Oh, I have some asshole neighbors who shut down my auto repair garage, so I got out and bought junk vehicles at surplus auctions and have them towed here and parked them everywhere, and they left and sued. I have nothing to do. I don't live here anymore." And he said, "Well, what does the town do about that?" And he said, "I live in Scottsdale. I have a tractor-trailer. This wouldn't fly." And there was still kind of a jokey mentality. He said, "Oh, they can't do anything. I own these vehicles, and I do whatever I want. The town enforcement is a joke." The town enforcement is a joke." This behavior started in 2011. A home office permit was issued by the Director of Zoning, Ian Cordwell, for an auto repair shop at this DR-190 property. Chapter 3, Table 3.11 of the town zoning ordinances stipulates where commercial businesses of this nature can operate, and desert rural 190 is not one of them. Homeowners noticed the traffic coming and going into this property and were told by the town officials, "It's just a hobby." I'm sorry, who has commercial lists installed in their garage for a hobby? All of a sudden, we see 12 to 15 cars coming and going with several parked for service, several more inside the garages, and parked outside with the hoods up. We hear engines revving on the weekends, our residential streets are used for their testing grounds for repaired vehicles. Finally, we were told, "They have a permit." And upon obtaining a copy of that permit, it was very obvious that someone in the town, zoning, had drunk the law here. This place should have been shut down immediately. The neighbors spent two and a half years hammering the town officials with documentation and pictures and evidencing the illegal activity. And finally, the town manager and the Director of Zoning terminated the HOP, and that's the letter that's at the very first of my little stack there. And I just want you to pay particular attention to the paragraphs that I've highlighted. The brothers that come and go from here were under impression that select neighbors were responsible for shutting down the illegal auto repair shop so the fireworks started. They have a hit list and a vendetta, closed off Echo Canyon Drive with barricades, commenced with verbal assault, and to certain properties they were stalking as my husband and I filed multiple police reports on these guys. It went on and on. And amidst all this turmoil and renegade antics, the Director of Zoning grants them a berm permit for a hundred plus yard front wall to shield the illegal activity at the residence. They start bringing in field dirt and every weekend fire up their earth movers to create this mound. Immediately closed off dirt with the two front driveways on the Fleming Springs, which is in violation of the landscape permit. They bulldozed a new 20-foot wide driveway across their property to connect with Echo Canyon Drive, which required a permit. Doubt that that happened. The landscape berm permit stipulates total natural desert vegetation and irrigation system to be installed. Two days before the permit expires, loads of desert vegetation appear overnight onto their driveway. They spent the weekend sticking the plants on the front of the berm. Their irrigation system is their youngest brother, who comes out every couple of weeks to spray the berm with a water hose. It gets better. Thanksgiving week 2014, we hear loud noises outside our home, and here comes load after load of field dirt, 13 loads to be exact, to form a berm on the backside of the property right next to Echo Canyon Drive. The Director of Zoning has granted an extension, even though they have not even complied with the original berm, excuse me, the original permit. I was personally told again by Mr. Cordwell that this new dirt must be incorporated into the base of the front berm. It's still piled up along with mogul home, commercial generators, commercial earth movers, a food truck, a water truck, a combat Hummer, a school bus, not to mention junk vehicles sitting around with the hoods up. And we continue to barrage the town officials with pictures, emails, and everything to take action here. We have ordinances stating parking of commercial vehicles is prohibited in DR-190. No storage of an RV or a bubble home outside of a garage unless covered for view. No junk vehicles parked outside the garage for more than four days. These renegade brothers have one goal for that property, auto repair shop. They have no intentions of abiding by any town code or ordinance who could care less about the destruction of the property and maintaining the environment. They don't live there, nor does the owner of the property.
Ms. Apple, I need you, you're way over the three minutes.
I've got one more paragraph, please bear with me. The Director of Zoning created this situation, and he needs to be accountable. Granting a permit for anything at this property is outrageous. Our neighborhood has been made the victims of these sinister brothers, and we are now looking at a junkyard and construction equipment storage yard where town officials have allowed to proliferate unregulated on private residential property. Selective enforcement has got to stop, otherwise we're all going to be looking in the junkyard in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Bob Hughes?
Three minutes, everyone, please, three minutes.
I'm trying to keep it, as most of three minutes as I can.
I'll remind you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. My name's Bob Hughes, Cave Creek resident. Excuse me. So with regard to this property, looking back on it four years ago, this was a very, very nice piece of property. It had a very nice home on it. There was no landscaping per se, but it had the potential to really turn into a nice piece of property. What's happened over the last four years is that it's been transformed by the owners into a piece of property that has been basically destroyed. And the pictures I've given you show you basically what's happened to the property. By looking at this panoramic view, you can see junk vehicles, you can see a berm that extends all the way from Echo Canyon, some, almost 100 yards down Fleming Springs, to block the view from the street to their activities. Now they want to add another berm along the north end here along Echo Canyon. I don't know how far along that's going to go, maybe the next request for a permit may be to extend another berm around the total perimeter of the house. I don't know. But in any case, the whole situation is that it's had a huge negative impact on all of us in the neighborhood. They basically have really destroyed that property. And these photos that we have here really don't do it justice. You need to get in your vehicles, drive up there, and take a look. It's a horrific situation. As part of your photos there, I've got a sheet that talks about junk motor vehicles. Town code, this is directed from the Cave Creek town code, doesn't allow junk vehicles to be on a property more than five days. Here's a junk vehicle that's been there, it's called the Death Mobile. It's been there for about a year, from what I can determine. Here's another vehicle early on, that they brought in for spare parts. No window in the back, no license plate. You can see that it's just sitting there as a junk vehicle that they've scavenged for spare parts and repair vehicles in their auto repair shop. This red truck was brought in on March 10th, 2012. And I talked to the marshal about it, I spoke to him, and said he was going to give them 30 days to remove it, in spite of the fact that it was a five-day moratorium on junk vehicles on the property. That vehicle sat there until the middle of October of 2012 before it was finally towed away. Here's a dump truck that they parked at the end. They have a habit of parking all their junk vehicles at one end of the property.
Three minutes?
Basically irritate, irritate the neighbors. Just one last comment. To me, this all points to the fact that the town code and zoning ordinance need to be reviewed, and all of the loopholes need to be plugged. And with the last council that was in there, in here, there was a move afoot to have a citizen board put together to review the town code. And I really encourage you to move in that direction. Let's review the code, let's close some of the loopholes, let's put some meaning behind some of the violations, and see if we can put a stop to this kind of thing. This kind of thing can happen, now that it's happened up here in Fleming Springs, in Echo Canyon, it can happen to any of our properties. So please take action on this. Thank you.
Got you, counsel.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So I have a number of things to, this is a timeline until the construction of the first berm. As you can see, the HOP was issued 2011 for an automotive repair shop. Well, first of all, that's in violation of code. Zoning ordinance, Chapter 3, Table 3.11, commercial zones. Auto repair is not even allowed in commercial buffer or town core, and only by special use permit in general commercial. So that means it's not allowed in DR-190. So January 1st, 2014 is the only business license I have a copy of for auto repair. It states auto repair with a federal tax ID and a transaction privilege tax. That means commercial. They are there making money. They're delivering a service that makes money. Clearly, commercial. As well, violation of zoning ordinance, Chapter 2, residential zones, desert rural zones purpose. The purpose of desert rural is to protect, prevent urban and desert land use conflicts by protecting scenic vistas, protecting natural habitats, blah, blah, blah. Okay, you get the point. March 13, request for zoning enforcement letter was sent to mayor and council, signed by 15 neighbors. Clearly, there is a problem. So in April, revocation of the home occupation permit happened, signed by Ian Cordwell. It's kind of small print, but he said, "Thank you because you stored a small car for me for a period of time. What do you think?" That is favors for favors by a public official. That is wrong. Moving on to junk, the junk motor vehicles, Chapter 72, storing, parking, or leaving junk motor vehicles on private property is prohibited. Then, a berm permit was signed and allowed by town. Why? Only anybody can guess why that was allowed, when there's illegal...
Counselor, you're over the three minutes, so please try to sum it up.
Then the revocation of the business license by Kerry, so they have no way and reason to conduct business at Fleming Springs. Understand zoning, and people don't often understand this, that if it's not allowed, I mean, if it is allowed, then it's permitted. If it is not stated, it is not allowed. There is nowhere, if you search zoning, that there is a word for berm. Berms are not allowed. And that's my wind-up. Thank you.
Ray Stark?
Ray Stark, Cave Creek resident. The previous speaker, Mayor, I know you've been through this a million times, go to your happy place, I don't want to berate you again. I've sat through the morning Thursday meetings, and we've talked of these issues a million times. Previous speakers, for the benefit of the other council members, I think you understand what we're up against. This is a cautionary tale. An erroneous decision allowed a business to be in a place it shouldn't have been, and then every step of the way, the degradation of this property was approved by the town. The town planning people approved it, and it's pretty much a monument to the poor decisions, the lax regulations, and the favoritism that has occurred in this town. So unfortunately, this can occur next to your house, next to your house, and next to your house. I have an unused horse arena on my property, and I have every right to start a small automotive business. And I've sat through the meetings with the marshal, and I don't need a business license, I don't need any kind of operating permit, nothing. I can buy as many used cars as I want, I can work on them, I can put them out there for sale, I can sell them. And that's crap. That's how loose our regulations are. So anyway, I'll leave you, thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sarge. Ms. Kerry?
That was the last speaker, Mayor.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes? Oh, so that's what you look like.
Yes. How are you guys doing tonight?
We're fine, Mr. Schultz.
Address a few things that my fellow neighbors have talked about. The business is no longer there and hasn't been since late last year. We're located right up in 36425 North Cave Creek Road. I'm sure the marshal's visited multiple times and seen me there all the time. Everything on the property, all those vehicles, all belong to us, and they're all registered, insured, and run and drive. Hoods are open, you know, we have pack rat problems. Who doesn't? About some machine being dropped off there the other night, and Ms. Apple saying she sold me there. I don't know what she's talking about, I haven't stepped on that property since July 3rd. I've been just too busy. I don't live there, I work somewhere else, I haven't had a chance to go there. She's known for making up stories. She had me arrested once before, saying I ran over, I ripped a stop sign out of the ground with my hand. She eventually talked to the DA, and they dropped the charges because she admitted to lying. I think that's about all I got.
Whoa, whoa. You're at the floor, Mr. Schultz.
I think that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Mayor Francia, vice mayor and council members. My name is Claudia Schalk. I actually live 6812 East Continental Mountain Drive. I live kitty corner from the property. And my husband and I moved here because it's a beautiful place. I don't sit and read the town code, I don't sit and know zoning numbers, I don't want to know that. I don't want to know politics. I don't want my neighbor having a berm in their yard. Because you know what? I wish all of you would take time and drive by it, because they park their vehicles on top of the berm. They have a very large military vehicle that they drive up and down the road, and they'll park it on the berm, and they honk their horn at 7:30 in the morning on a Saturday or a Sunday, and like Ray Stark said, it can happen to any of you. So you know what? It begins with the berm. I just ask you, and I beg you, please do not approve the berm on the other side. And take time to drive by the property. It's a beautiful place we live in, we all appreciate it. Take time and see what my neighbor has in his yard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Public comment is still on. Okay, I thank everyone for speaking. Counselor, question, yes, Counselor.
My question is for the owners, Mr. Schultz doesn't, yes, what is the primary purpose of your property? Your use of the property?
My brothers live there.
So it's a residence, you're saying?
Yes.
Your primary purpose is a residence?
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor Lamar? I guess this is for the town manager. I went to several of the eight o'clock meetings, and so I've heard this story multiple times too. Mr. Stark's not gracious enough to acknowledge that, but that's beside the point. This is really an awful situation and I know I've asked, even although some would not acknowledge it, I have asked in the past, what is the problem? Is it a loophole in the ordinances? But I understand that although the permit has been denied and somebody's not doing cool business, but having this array of junk vehicles and having berms this big with the appearance of just total slipshot irrigation systems, if there is an irrigation system and this, there's got to be a way that you can bring to us an amendment to existing ordinances or a new ordinance that can cover this under some sort of a nuisance ordinance or something collectively. Because I understand that it's been, oh, I'm running a business. I'm not running a business. And I know the problems that I've discussed with you folks about trying to, you know, it's like hitting the mole. You know, it keeps popping back up. But I guess my comment in this is, get with our, we have a great town manager now. He's been doing this for years. Get with him and see, take a look at our ordinances and bring something to us that we can address this, an amendment or a new ordinance or something.
Yes, sir.
Just on this issue, this has gone on long enough. And so let's address it with him. That's what I would like to see, is an amendment that can address this and so that if this kind of situation continues and it's not cleaned up, and then if we can, and the more, come to us and explain to us why the constitution and the law, state law, whatever, doesn't allow us to be any more stringent than we are with respect to this kind of business because as far as I'm concerned, I would be as limited as some of these people are if this was happening in my neighborhood. Well, that's all. I'm not criticizing anybody for, I know that this has been, this is a professional situation that's gone on and it's a game now. And it's, how can we get around this? But I've got to believe we can tighten this little, because it's not right.
Yes, so council, let's get this.
Yeah, excuse me, a couple of questions. Do we have a definition of junk vehicle?
Counsel, I would have the zoning administrator actually answer that question. It's the enforcement agent for that that you were referring to. Town code and zoning ordinance are both the same. They're all town code. So I would have the town marshal read either, ask him on that.
It's in this package? Do these vehicles, if they're licensed and they run, does that, is that junk?
I would have the town marshal to speak on that.
Vice mayor, members of council, the way the junk vehicle ordinance is written, it does not have to be registered. It has to be a running vehicle or vehicle that's in immediate process of being repaired and can be running. When we go and we do inspections, we make the pressure of brothers to turn on the vehicles and show that the vehicles are running. There are indications where their vehicles are not running that he is waiting on repairs for. We ask him at that point to put the vehicle that's not running into his garage, which he's always done for us. But when we go and we inspect those vehicles, those vehicles are running vehicles. I'm not saying that Mr. Schultz's property is... Some of the vehicles definitely are not attractive vehicles by any means, but if they run, they don't fit the town code for a junk vehicle.
Okay, I just wanted to check that. I have, that was, I think, that's all. I moved back to town something over a year and a half ago and I have driven by many times and I thought it was under construction. I saw more and more vehicles. It got less and less, became less and less obvious what was going on. And it's, you know, it's pathetic. It's ugly. It's unnecessary. I'd love to know what you want. I mean, what, you don't use the cars, they run, that's fine. Is it just to terrorize the neighborhood? Is it what they're saying? And if so, why? Why do you insist on doing that? You have two brothers there? Two brothers there and how many, I mean, sometimes there are three...
Mr. Schultz, if you want to answer a question, you need to...
There are three vehicles, five vehicles, 10 vehicles. Why? Why? Why would you want to terrorize the neighborhood like that? And make it so ugly? I mean, look, it's a terrible ugliness in the middle of all this beauty. Why would you want to do that?
It's not to terrorize anybody. I mean, they're all vehicles that are all owned by my family. And I mean, we're car people. You know, some people collect rocks, some people collect dirt bikes, some people collect stamps. I collect cars.
With no consideration for the neighbors whatsoever and the neighborhood and the beauty of this place that we all live in for the beauty, you guys just don't care and you're going to make it as hard for your neighbors to enjoy their lives as you can? Is that the idea?
No, not at all. I'd say maybe there are an excessive amount of cars there at the particular moment, but I mean, they move around.
Is there anything we can do to help? Can, what do you want? To minimize the problem instead of exacerbating it and making it worse and worse or trying to hide it with berms and more berms?
I mean, I don't know. I just would like to be left alone. I don't need the neighbors running around taking pictures of my property every five minutes, screaming at my brothers, being rude, having me arrested by lying. I mean, these are things that have happened.
What's the deal with the berms?
We built the original berm for privacy.
Parked a vehicle?
No vehicles ever been parked on top of the berm. The berm is only, it's like this, you can't get a vehicle on top of this.
Back berm.
There is no back berm.
Come on, folks. Come on. No, 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 no. Okay, wait, excuse me, vice mayor. You guys all had your chance, all right? The question is to Mr. Schultz. We're not doing vaudeville tonight. Cato, thank you. Mr. Schultz, let me just, can anything be gained from your side as well as your neighbors if you were to sit down in town hall with the town manager and try to, one, understand each other's position? To simplify, you like cars, okay? To understand your neighbor's position so that this doesn't continue for another month or another couple of months or another year, heaven forbid? Would there be value in that?
I mean, we could give it a shot. I'm not opposed to it.
Okay, vice mayor, I interrupted you. I'm sorry. No, you know, I get that some people's treasure is, or junk is another person's treasure to some extent. But you know, looking at these berms, that's nothing but retaliation as far as I'm concerned. And it doesn't look perfect. It doesn't enhance the property at all. And so it's almost self-destructive.
I don't understand that.
So just listen, here's the bottom line. Please take the offer because what I'm asking the town manager and the lawyer to do, and this brilliant guy, the lawyer, is to find a way to resolve this. And it's not going to be to your benefit because right now, I understand you're in between this ordinance and that ordinance. But they're going to find a way to resolve this and then we're going to enforce it. So take the opportunity and talk to the town manager, just maybe just, you know, it sounds to me like this is the Hatfields of the McCoys. And after a while, you don't even know why you're killing each other. It just keeps happening because you're angry at them and they're angry at you. Obviously, there's emotions here. Try to take that out. Just think, okay, let's just back up a minute, take the opportunity. Because if you don't, unless there is state law or constitution, either federal or state constitution, that limits our ability to enforce, I am going to follow up until there's ordinances on the books in this town that makes you or finds you substantially because this is not being a good neighbor, man. And I hate to regulate that because you have property value and property rights too. It's just a suggestion. It's not a challenge.
Right.
If I could suggest, town manager, two directives. One is set up a meeting. Invite Mr. Schultz and the neighbors and see if you all can break bread a little bit and work this out simultaneously. Have staff prepare an ordinance that will come to council no later than the first meeting of September. I would hope that if we're going to have this meeting, set the, both sides, set the antagonism aside, just for, you know, you can get right back to being antagonistic five hours later, but just take a afternoon and try and... Are you from Pennsylvania, Mr.?
Yes.
Where?
Just outside of Philadelphia.
Philadelphia's a big city. Where is outside of Philadelphia?
Yeah, like to the northwest suburbs, like King of Prussia area.
Oh, yes, I know.
My father's from there.
Well, be inspired by the city of brotherly love and let's proceed forward. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
The citizens need a solution and so do we.
Okay, anything else from council? Thank you. We don't, oh, I'm sorry, councilman bunch. Yeah, I, we're past that. You had your chance, under court. Again, let's go by the rules, people, all right? You had your chance. Councilman bunch.
I'm sitting here tonight as a direct result of a neighbor dispute over 12 years ago, 13 years ago, and I know how the things escalate. I had a neighbor who insisted on taking photographs of my children while they were in the backyard. So I put up a six-foot fence, which is very uncave creek, just to protect our own privacy. The south end of a northbound Havelina put a video camera under his eaves where he could look over my fence into my backyard and videotape my children. I know how these things escalate. I just want to add one thing. I think it's lone mountain between Cave Creek and Scottsdale Road. There's a place there that did a berm and I have no idea why. Properly landscaped, they can actually be an addition and they can do two things. They can give you something nice to look at and they can also give you the privacy you want on the other side of that berm. There is room for work here. There is room for compromise. Christian, you've got two dang many cars sitting there. And I know about the hoods open. I've got one in my, oop, I shouldn't say this. I've got one I have issues with them getting into and whenever I'm not driving it, I lift the hood on it too because it keeps the pack rats out. It's real expensive to change all that darn wiring. But there's room for compromises. There's room for, and Christian, I know that you're pretty reasonable. I've known you for three or four years. That's not the case with some of your siblings. And that really exacerbates issues if you could like muzzle him. Okay, that's all I've got to say.
Okay, town manager, set up the meeting. Have Barbara bake cookies simultaneously. Move our ordinance to council. Motion to adjourn, council. So, thank you, council.